For Ward Two. Four community organizations collaborated to bring this forum to us tonight. They are the Prospect Park Association, Longfellow Community Council, the Southeast Como Improvement Association, and Cedar Riverside Community Council. I'm now going to turn it over to Ben Bramo, who is representing the Southeast Como Improvement Association, to give you a welcome from Ward Two.
Thank you, Pam. On behalf of the neighborhoods, I'd like to welcome you all again to tonight's event. Ward Two is a lively region in Minneapolis. Situated on the eastern half of the city, it encompasses seven neighborhoods, from the southern half of Southeast Como in the north, to Prospect Park, seaward, Cedar Riverside, the University District, and Longfellow and Cooper in the south. It's an area full of lively businesses on Lake Street and University Avenue, the University of Minnesota, the Mississippi River, and Augsburg. I look forward to tonight's event and hope you all learn a lot, and I'll turn that back over to Pam. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ben. I also want to remind you that tonight is being livestreamed from MCN6 Studios in Minneapolis. We're being taped and broadcast, thanks to MCN6, and we can be streamed, you can stream it from our League of Women Voters Minneapolis Facebook page. Now it's my turn to give a commercial. I want to let you know a little bit about the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We work to increase understanding of major policy issues, and we influence public policy through education and advocacy. We do not ever support specific candidates or political parties. Tonight, you're going to hear from four candidates for the second ward city council seat, and I want to thank all of these candidates for running. You've put, you're putting yourself out there publicly, and it's really, I know it's not easy, but I really appreciate all of you being willing to try to make our city a better place to live. Our candidates tonight are Robin Morlobach, Cam Gordon, Yusra Arab, and Tom Anderson. My name is Pam Teline, and I'm going to be your moderator, and I'm joined tonight by Jane Papa Giorgio, who will be taking questions if you send them in to the Facebook page, and by Marilyn Contasano, who will be our timekeeper. We have been asked by Fair Vote Minnesota to read the following reminder. Minneapolis has ranked choice voting elections. There is not a primary election. You have the power to rank candidates in the order of your preference on the November ballot. As you hear from the candidates, consider not just your first choice, but also your second and third choice. To submit a question anonymously, you can go to our Facebook page and post the question by using the blue send button. I hope it's blue. I haven't actually tried it myself. Please do not address your questions to any one candidate, as we will not ask any questions to any one candidate. All questions will be asked of all four candidates. Each candidate will now get a minute and a half for opening statements, and then we will move on to questions. We'll be ending with one-minute closing remarks. We're going to go in the same order that you see here, and the candidates drew numbers, that's why they're seated in the order that they are, and we will start each question with a different candidate. As questions come in, the audience may, we may be able to add some of their questions, too. Okay, so we now have opening, opening comments, and Robin, you chose number one, so you may go first.
Awesome. Thank you so much for having me. I'm Robin Wansley Walaba, and I'm running for Ward Two because the demographic makeup of Ward Two shows that it is ready for a black woman, millennial, renter, and democratic socialist elected leader. And most importantly, our city is currently at a crossroads. We've seen more corporate development, police violence, gentrification, climate pollution, and greater economic disparities under our current leadership, and that's a testament to why the status quo just simply does not work. And these dynamics means that it is time for new leadership, especially leadership that includes grassroots organizers like myself, that has a history and a track record of working hand in hand with coalitions on the ground to create meaningful change, like a 15-minute-a-age. And I promise to every single Ward Two resident that I'm going to bring that experience forward to make sure that we create real change and pass measures like rent control, expand public housing, make sure that we're pursuing public safety beyond policing, as well as a tax on the rich so we can fund our collective needs. And this is the time to set a new precedence for Minneapolis and the world to show that we can actually forge a new path work, pathway forward in light of George Floyd and the historic uprising that took place last year, and this is a time to have leaders to meet this moment, and I'm that leader.
Thank you. Cam?
Thank you very much, and I'm honored and privileged to be here, and it's been my honor and privilege to represent the people of Ward Two on the Minneapolis City Council, and I'm asking for another opportunity to do that. In my time on the council, I've used four key values to guide my work: social and economic justice, grassroots democracy, sustainability, and peace and nonviolence. Every day when I get to work, every time I make a decision, every time I go to a meeting, look at an agenda, come to a forum, I ask myself, what can I do to make this a more just, democratic, peaceful, and sustainable city? That's not all I ask. I also ask, what can I do and how can I use this opportunity to improve the lives of my constituents and the people of Ward Two? What can I do to help them meet their needs? What can I do to help them realize a vision of a city where each and every one of us has the opportunity, the freedom, and the support we need to realize our potentials, to be healthy, to thrive, and be successful while we care for each other, while we promote social well-being, and we protect our environment? But that's not all. I think it's important we're also focused on the future. I ask myself, what can we do now, not only to address our immediate needs that we're facing, but what can we do now to make sure whatever we do now is also improving the lives for our children and for the generations to come?
Thank you. Yusra?
Thank you. Let me start off by thanking the League of Women Voters and the organizations, the neighborhood organizations, that put together this wonderful forum. My name is Yusra Arab. I'm a mother of a beautiful 12-year-old daughter, an advocate, a renter in the Southeast Como neighborhood, where I've resided for the past 14 years, a proud black Muslim immigrant, and I'm running to represent all the diverse and vibrant communities in Ward Two on the Minneapolis City Council. I'm running to serve Ward Two on the council because our city is at a critical crossroads. We're experiencing some of the most consequential and complex challenges in our city's history, and the nation's eyes are on us as we work to navigate them. From transforming our current public safety systems, to addressing our growing housing crisis, to navigating and recovering from a global pandemic, we need to come together to move our city forward. We need leaders who reflect, we need, we need leaders who reflect the diversity of our communities and our city. We need leaders who are ready to meet this moment with collaboration, transparency, and the political will to get things done. I believe I have the vision, both experience and the, both the experience, professional and lived experience, to just do that. I'm running for the seat because we're, we're not better off than we were 16 years ago. We're experiencing some very complex challenges, and we need someone who has lived those experiences, knows the communities on the ground, and can navigate them, and I hope to be that leader with your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Hi, I'm Tom Anderson, and I'm running to represent Ward Two on the Minneapolis City Council. I grew up in northern Minnesota, moved down to Minneapolis to go to the University of Minnesota. There I got my undergraduate degree in political science and communication studies. I did some political campaign work before I decided to take a job managing a small business in the North Loop of Minneapolis. It was a great experience. I got to do hiring, and budgets, and scheduling, and really see how difficult it is day in and day out for our small businesses in our city. However, it wasn't my calling, so I decided to go back to the U of M and get my master's degree in education, where I followed up by teaching in public school for five years. I majored in middle school social studies, global studies, Minnesota history, US history, before moving on to my current job as Director of Government Relations for over 50,000 Minnesota State University students. You know, I'm running because we have a divided and dysfunctional city, and I feel like right now we need people who are willing and able to bring people together, to talk, to listen, to understand, not to vilify. And I know we'll have differences in policy, but those differences are good, and we just need leaders who are willing to listen, who are willing to disagree in a way that, in a way that's respectful, and can bring our city together so that we can create the policies we need to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will now start with the questions, and as I said before, most of these questions were presented from the neighborhood organizations that are sponsoring the forum tonight. So after this election, the city will face a tough transitional period, regardless of which charter amendments pass. Which of your experiences have prepared you to overcome these transitional challenges, and why are you the right leader for this moment? And we'll begin with Cam.
Well, I'm sure there's lots of experiences that have helped prepare me for what's coming up again, but I'm thinking of my experience working on the city council right now. I think that I have a proven track record that people can, can look at. We've been some pretty, through some pretty tough times with our city, I will admit. I think the last two years have been about the worst years ever in the city of Minneapolis, so there will be a transition no matter what. We have a pandemic that we're climbing out of, we have the civil unrest that we're dealing with. I understand how things work in City Hall. I have built relationships. I also have relationships and experiences that go deep with the community. I was actually a reporter for local newspaper. I've run a small business in the community. I've raised my family here, so I understand the needs of the community and, in the community, and I understand how city government works, and I'm prepared to hit the ground running. I know where some of the levers are, and I believe that I'm ready to take the challenges that will meet us during that transition.
Yusra?
Thank you. That's a great question. So I believe that in my lived experience, growing up in South Minneapolis, growing up in public housing and being raised by a single parent, and being in a community that was over-pleased at the same time, lacked public safety, prepares me for being able to deal with some of the critical issues that we're dealing with as a city. I've also worked as an advocate in many years within the community, working for economic inclusion, working with community police relations, and affordable housing. I've also worked as a policy aide at City Hall for four years, working with elected officials, and I've built relationship with department heads, and I have what it takes to move the city forward.
Tom?
Great, thank you. I've lived in Ward Two for 10 years. I was on the board of the Longfellow Community Council. Thank you for hosting this. I was also on the co-chair of the Neighborhood Development and Transportation Committee, helping our community voice their opinion in all sorts of development issues. I work at the state and federal level, doing government relations work, so I understand how the government operates, how the government functions. Also, I just want to say that this, this isn't all about us either. It's about how we can pull other people into this conversation, how we can pull our communities together, how we approach people, and I think that I have the right background and the right mentality for the job, and I really hope that people in Ward Two will give me that opportunity.
Okay, and Robin?
Yeah, my background is the organizer is what I'm bringing forward to really address this crucial transition, where we're really, as a city, going to tackle some major issues around public safety and housing that has gone unaddressed under our current ward and citywide leadership. And to really tackle this head-on, it is about pulling folks together across all different stakeholder backgrounds, and the way in which we do this, especially from my own commitments, is through actually organizing a community office right in the ward. I'm going to donate a portion of my salary to make sure we have that office and have these organizing and collaborative meetings, so that everyone has input to make sure we have the strongest public safety charter amendment that's passed, as well as rent control. So those are some of the clear commitments that I'm looking for in moving forward with, to make sure we address these substantial issues and crises head-on and together.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we're going to go to the charter amendments. We knew we would be talking about that tonight, and we will, the first question is about the charter amendment number one that's going to be on the ballot. I will read a synopsis of the charter amendment, and then you will be asked, and you will get a minute and a half to answer this question because this is on so many people's minds. Shall the Minneapolis City Charter be amended to adopt a change in its form of government to an executive mayor-legislative council structure to shift certain powers to the mayor, consolidating administrative authority over all operating departments under the mayor, and eliminating the executive committee? Do you support this amendment, yes or no, and why? And you do get a minute and a half. And Yusra?
Is it me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. That's a great question. So yes, I do support this amendment. The form of weak mayor, strong council that we have is peculiar, and there is no other city in our state, as well as our country, that has that same form. Even our, our neighbors in St. Paul have a separation of power where there's a legislative branch and an executive branch. And for my time at City Hall, having to see department heads placate to 14 different people and lobby council to get things done has, has stagnated progress, and that's why we can't get things done. So this amendment would help us streamline things and build more accountability into it, and separate powers where council can legislate and, and the mayor can be the executive branch. So that is the reason why I am supporting. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Great, thank you. As a social studies teacher, the current system just boggles my mind. There's, there's generally a legislative branch that writes laws, and executive branch that enforces the, or executes those laws. That's, that's how we should have it. We're not asking at the federal government for all of our congress members to be involved in the day-to-day workings of the Department of Education, or the Department of Agriculture, or Department of Defense. We don't, we don't have congress meddling in the day-to-day affairs of those departments, and we shouldn't have our city council meddling in the day-to-day affairs of our city's departments. I see, I saw a meme with the current mayor dressed up like a dictator that says "power grab," and it was actually a little bit comical, but it's not about this mayor. It's not about this council. It's about a system and how we make sure that that system works for us moving forward. And I'll say, it'll allow our council to focus on creating good policy, they can focus on oversight, they can focus on community engagement, and then we can let the people that we hire, the department heads, who still have to be, you know, approved by the council, do their job without having to be pulled in a bunch of different directions. And so, so I just would urge people to think not about our current mayor and our current council, but to make this more about how do we make the city government work for the people of Minneapolis? And I will say also that this isn't a silver bullet. We need people who, council members who are willing to talk to the mayor, to talk to each other, to find the solutions, and that really is how we create a more functioning city government, but I think this can move us in that direction.
Hey, thank you. Robin?
I oppose this amendment for two specific reasons. One, I believe in representative democracy, and based off of past voting records, under a strong mayor system, essentially Ward 13, Ward 12, Ward 10, the most affluent and most white, or least diverse wards, where essentially have most control over our city and how resources are allocated. And the 13 council structure allows for equitable representation to actually happen in our city, so I protect and support local democracy. And also, most importantly, we see this model fail already. The current Police Department follows under the strict jurisdiction of our current mayor, and it's the most corrupt and dysfunctional department, so it makes absolutely no sense why we would want to model and run the rest of our city in the same type of model of the Police Department that currently causes more harm, has basically placed our city into a budget deficit, and has not really met the totality of needs amongst our residents. So we already see, this is a failed model, and this is not a time to replicate things that do not fail or actually create more equity in our current city that is deeply entrenched with so many disparities right now.
Thank you. And Cam?
I'll also be voting no on this first question. I have deep concerns about it. I actually have seen the executive committee functioning under three different mayors. I think it's very unfortunate if we remove that. I'm very concerned about that. The executive committee right now is the one committee that the mayor sits on with the council. The mayor sits on with the council president, vice president, minority leader, and majority leader, so it's a chance for the leaders to get together and talk about labor contracts, talk about and evaluate department heads, bring those names forward, and work on a variety of projects together. It's actually bringing the council together. This is going to push the council and the mayor further apart. It's going to consolidate more power in the mayor's office, and we already have a strong mayor. One of the characteristics of a strong mayor system is that they can veto any decision the council makes. In a weak mayor system, the mayor sits on the councils, and they have one vote. In our system, the mayor can veto any decision the council makes, a staff direction, a resolution, and ordinance. That means the mayor is carrying around the power of eight votes with him, because it takes us nine votes to override the mayor. I'm also concerned about consolidating more power on an at-large seat. I have similar concerns about where the votes come and who mayors feel like they answer to. There's something called the golden crescent in the city of Minneapolis, and it does go where the wealthiest and whitest voters are. But mayors also feel a lot of pressure to respond to lobbyists and downtown interests, and there are people who pay people to meet with the council and meet with the mayors, and the more power that gets consolidated there, the less power that will be spread out to the disenfranchised people of our city.
Thank you. All right. The next question is, one primary concern with the current organization of our city government is lack of accountability. How will you work with the council and the mayor to avoid fragmentation and inefficiency, and to provide better accountability for decisions that are made? And Tom, you'll start that one.
Great, I think there, there are certainly systems in place for accountability. We're coming up on one of them here very soon, and that's an election. I think we, we have a choice of who we choose. There are systems in place to hold people accountable in our city already, and I, and I think that what we need is for people, our council members, I think we, I'm just, I guess I'll plead with you all to, to think about the ways in which our council members communicate with each other, the way they communicate with the mayor. I know I keep saying this, but it is extremely important, the people that we elect, most of us agree on the problems that are in our city. We don't agree with all of the, all of the solutions, but that disagreement is good, and we should be able to disagree with each other and come to some consensus to move our city forward, and right now, we don't have that. We have a council that won't talk to a mayor, council members who don't, won't talk to each other. A year and a half into this, they're not able, they haven't been able to come together to actually create a comprehensive system for public safety in our city and an actual plan for that, so it's time to get people who are willing to do that work together.
Thank you. Robin?
Yeah, I think the best way to really address transparency or accountability is the fact that we have a city council that has largely ignored the needs of most of its constituents. Many, especially as an organizer, many average and ordinary people feel completely ignored and dismissed by our current leadership, and that is reflective in the lack of changes that's been made around housing, around public safety. So for me, as I mentioned earlier, my campaign, one of our clearest commitments is to open a community office, where we'll have regular invitations and hours for the community to come in, join us for organizing conversations around these clear issues, to make sure that they're activated in our decision-making, to make sure they're a part of our participatory budgeting, so that no one is blindsided by the changes that we're bringing forth, and it's led by the people. So I think that is the clearest way in which you can improve transparency and accountability is to make sure you're rooted in the communities that you serve, and you're empowering community members to be the changemakers that we already know they are.
Thank you. Cam?
Seems like there's a couple different parts of accountability, maybe, that the questioner is asking about. One is how do I hold myself accountable, and how can people hold me accountable? I do that by trying to communicate really clearly with people. I put out monthly reports. I attend neighborhood organization meetings. I go out in the community. I'm available for office hours in the ward, and I want people to know, before I make a decision, why I'm thinking about making a decision like I might be, and I want to be able to have a conversation and listen to people about that. I also think it's really important that generally, we're able to hold ourselves accountable in city government. I think we need to have measurable results, and we need to target those objectives with each department and each initiative that we do, and take the time to measure those and see if we're meeting those goals, and if we're being successful in, in meeting those indicators or not, and then adjust our plans accordingly.
And Yusra?
Thank you. I think most of us have seen the dysfunctionality of this current council in the, in the past year and a half, when it comes to affordable housing, when it comes to a properly functioning public safety department, when it comes to aiding BIPOC communities, when it comes to aiding businesses who've suffered from the pandemic and the subsequent civil unrest. I think one of the ways in which we can increase accountability is by passing the first question, the amendment, that, and separating power so that we know who to go after if things are not, don't come through. The other thing is, we have a council that has historically disregarded BIPOC communities and the need on the ground. They're isolated, that we've seen the fact that they've promised they would come up, they would engage community, come up with a concrete plan, and we yet to see that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Now we move on to the second, did everybody answer that one? Okay. I'm sorry, you look like you thought I didn't ask you. We move on to the Second Amendment, which is the one on public safety, and again, I will just read briefly what it entails. Shall the City of Minneapolis City Charter be amended to remove the Police Department and replace it with a Department of Public Safety that employs a comprehensive public health approach to the delivery of functions by the Department of Public Safety? This amendment would create a Department of Public Safety combining public safety functions through a comprehensive public health approach to determine, to be determined by the mayor and the council. Do you support this proposal, yes or no, and why? And again, you get a minute and a half to answer this question. And we start with Robin.
Yep, I absolutely support this amendment. As I mentioned, you know, as an organizer, as someone who's embedded myself in the community, I listen to the people, and this is a community-driven effort. 22,000 residents, this, these are workers, these are parents, who took their precious time to sign a petition in negative 30-degree weather, to basically say, we need a new mandate on public safety, and it's largely because our current leadership, both in the ward and citywide, has failed to address a police department that's created more violence, more harm in our communities, and have not really brought forth substantial changes of how we actually provide equitable safety to everyone. So I absolutely support the people and who did a lot of labor in bringing this forward because of our councils in action, and also, most importantly, I'm looking forward to be one of the folks who's been an organizer on the front lines and relationships to police brutality, and making sure that we're bringing stakeholder groups who've been impacted by this, and making sure that we have a strong Department of Public Safety that's going to have a fully funded, expanded 911 and 311 department, that's going to prioritize prevention, that's also going to pair this with the resources like schools and public education and housing that actually keeps our community safe. So I'm really excited to get the ball rolling on such a crucial issue in our city to really address a large issue around, we, we simply have not provided safety to everyone.
Thank you. Cam?
I enthusiastically support this ballot measure. I'll be voting yes, and I think that everybody else should as well. I identified early on a problem with our charter when it came to the Police Department. It's the one city department that has exclusive command, control, and authority given to it by the mayor. The department is isolated and siloed under the mayor's office. All the other departments, the mayor and the council together set policy for them. We can set city policy for all the other departments, but we can't for the Police Department. It is Police Department policy set by two people who have a conversation, they do have to write it down, and they give it to the city attorney. When the city council and the mayor work together and set policy, we have a hearing about it, it's shared with the public, we vote on it, and it becomes city policy. It actually changes culture in departments over time. As councils leave, there's still a city policy there. That doesn't happen with the Police Department. In fact, we find in that department that sometimes, not always, but often, there's a loyalty that goes to the department and not to the city enterprise as a whole, or even the city as a whole and the people, and that is a big concern. We have hit a wall time- We have hit a wall time and time again. And actually, this was a campaign issue of mine in 2017. I put forward a charter amendment in 2018 to solve this problem. Time and time again, we see things we want to change and make a difference of. The most recent one is the use of rubber bullets and less lethal weapons. Brooklyn Center's council set a policy. The mayor sits on the council with them there. Philadelphia did. We can't do that in the city of Minneapolis because we don't have policymaking authority over it as the elected officials, and that's simply wrong. We should fix it.
Thank you. Yusra?
No, I do not support it, and there are multiple reasons for that. We don't know what public safety would look like if this passes. We don't know who's going to decide whether or not, it says whether or not there might be police force if necessary. We don't know who's going to decide that. Council promised about a year ago on powder horn that they would come up with a plan, engage the community, and implement a concrete plan. They've yet to do that. They have thirty days since there is no timeline on this amendment to come up with a concrete plan. They haven't been able to do it in a year and a half. I doubt they'll be able to do it in thirty days. Every alternative response implemented or suggested in this amendment can be done by council. The political will for it wasn't there. We could institute a Department of Public Safety right now with the current structure. Council didn't do that. They are able to do everything and implement everything that is beyond policing. They haven't had the political will to do it. So it's not just the mayor or MPD. It also has to do with the lack of leadership from council. The communities on the ground are suffering. There's an uptick in crime and gun violence. And the communities, especially minority and BIPOC communities, are feeling like they're neglected, they're not part of the process, they're not part of the solution. They don't know what they're voting on. And they're the ones who are going to be impacted and collateral if this passes. And that is why I do not support it.
Tom?
No, I agree with Yusra on this one. And I, but I also agree with all of the problems that were highlighted by Robin and Cam, significant problems that we need to fix. And I actually, the people who have done all of the work for the Vote Yes campaign have done good work in putting this forward. A Department of Public Safety could be a really good idea. A comprehensive system of public safety with social workers, mental health professionals, my wife's a mental health professional, is extremely important. Unarmed traffic units are a good idea. There are a lot of good ideas. The problem is, we're a year and a half in, and the council has yet to come up with a comprehensive plan. You need to tell us what the budget is for this. You need to tell us what the staffing levels are for this. You need to, they need to have done the work so that the voters can say, "Okay, here's what it looks like if I vote yes. Here's what it looks like if I vote no." And that's the key problem, is that they haven't done that work in a year and a half, and it's, they're saying, "Trust us. We'll do it in thirty days." We've highlighted all of the problems. We know what a lot of the solutions can be, but we don't know what it looks like moving forward, and that's the problem. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, you have a minute for the next one. And this will be interesting. You have two questions coming up, and they're kind of the opposite of each other. So, "If the voters approve of City Question Two, what is your plan for the public safety of Minneapolis?" And Cam, you go first.
Well, first of all, I wanted to be clear that we have a lot more than thirty days to implement anything that goes into the charter. According to the city attorney, we have thirty days to actually change the language on the charter. So the first thing we would need to do is we would need to appoint a commissioner of the new department. In the first thirty days, I would recommend an interim commissioner who would become the project manager who could develop this. Now, you can look at what the city council has done with their last budget, creating the crisis mobile mental health responders, and you can get an idea what we might do additionally. We've also set up 911. That's in the city coordinator's office. We've set up traffic control. That's in regulatory services. Emergency management is in another office. This would give us an opportunity to bring those together into one office. Now we'd have those law enforcement officers, and the budget would be whatever we approved this year going into 2022. Nobody would lose their job. Everybody would have contracts. All the police officers that we have now, and probably those that we funded to hire, would also be part of this new department moving forward. And they could work in a holistic way with other professionals from other areas to do their work.
Thank you. Yusra?
Yes. If it was to pass, we would obviously accept the will of the people. And, but my addition on alternative responses, having mental health practitioners, having social workers working with the county to build some type of coping way that we can, because the city doesn't do social services, we can partner up with the county since they are better equipped to deal with social services and build some type of a force that works together and combats and assists police on the ground with alternative responses when it comes to homelessness response, when it comes to chemical dependency or mental health. But also include some form of law enforcement as part of that new department.
Thank you. Tom?
Great. Yeah, I mean, I think that's the issue, right, is what do we do moving forward? If it passes, there's a lot of work to do. A lot of work that I, again, I think should have been done over the last year and a half. As a council, you can bring in the first responders, bring in errando, bring in the social workers, bring in dispatchers, set a budget, start talking about how all of this is going to operate and come up with a plan. I alone can't fix this. I alone don't have the perfect plan. I'm a human being, and if I told you I had the perfect plan, I'd be lying to you or I would be highly narcissistic. We need to work together to find those solutions. And all of the ideas that have been highlighted are great ideas. We need to figure out how to implement them, and to do that, it's not going to just be me. It's going to be bringing people together as an entire council to sit down and figure out what this looks like, what the budget is. Because inevitably, if you're going to have to add all of these other services, which I really like, I think it's a great idea, you're going to have to find that money somewhere. So we're going to have to be honest about what that budget looks like if we want more social workers, more mental health workers. We want more people out doing that work that needs to be done, and I'm out of time, but thank you.
Thank you. Robin?
Yes. I'm super excited about this as someone who's been on the front lines doing this work and actually have expertise as a researcher around, what are some of the best practices that other cities and countries are doing around this? Because Minneapolis is behind the curve. But one of the first things I'm glad Tom brought up around engaging and welcoming everyone in the process. This is why I'm committed to having an office right in the ward to welcome community members to be part of the organizing conversations to drive an ordinance that's very thoughtful of what is needed to respond to the crises in our communities. This also means for me, also having participatory budgeting. And also check out my website, robinforminneapolis. We have a very clear plan of like, fully funding and expanding 311 and 911, making sure that this department is decriminalizing and demilitarized so it's not shooting rubber bullets at civilians in times of crises. We need to be expanding the unarmed workforce, like mental health providers and social workers, and to have democratic oversight, to make sure people, the people are overseeing the department, not, you know, police figures that's not doing anything to rein in the chauvins that exist on our force. So excited about that.
Thank you. All right. The second part of this one is, "If the voters do not approve of City Question Number Two, what would be your plan for reforming the Police Department in Minneapolis?" And Yusra, you would go next.
Sure. Thank you. It's a great question. I do believe in all of the alternative responses presented in the amendment. I think they're a great idea, and it's needed. We need to be able to disentangle MPD with dealing with social failures such as mental health response and homelessness and addiction. We need to have proper way to deal with that and be more culturally appropriate and have wraparound services for individuals. Could you repeat the question? I apologize.
That's right.
If it doesn't pass. So I do, I do, I do believe in looking at public safety holistically, and that does include alternative responses. But we also need to be able to fundamentally reform MPD. And this has to do with building relationship within communities and actually looking at the department and saying, "What can we do to make sure that they're held more accountable?" Because we all agree, it's about accountability more than anything. We do need public safety, but we shouldn't sacrifice justice for it. So I do appreciate, and I do think, having a more holistic public safety is a better way for the future. Thank you.
Tom?
Similarly to what we would do if it does passes, sit down with each other, figure out how we're going to move forward, alternative responses that we've all listed over and over again. We'll find a different place to put those. They, unfortunately, they won't be able to be quite as streamlined under all one Department of Public Safety just yet. But when you come back with that plan and you're able to show voters, "Here's an actual plan. Here's how we're going to move forward," then you could come back to voters again and say, "If you vote yes, if it doesn't pass, if you vote yes on this, here's how we'll change the charter. Here's the actual impact that it will have. Here is the budget. Here are the people who are going to be in charge." And then you can move forward, and maybe you can get more people, and you can pass something next time with an actual plan that people understand what they're voting for. Also, and in the meantime, you need stronger negotiation with the MPD union. That's a huge problem, and I think, you know, we also have to investigate if pulling that underneath the Department of Public Safety is going to do anything as far as their union, and we need to make sure that we hold them accountable. But it's a similar process. We got to be able to get together to create these plans.
Okay, thank you. Robin?
Yeah, the same applies. It just means that we need elected officials like myself who have the political will to see these things through. One of the most powerful tools that a city council person holds is the budget. So through actually advocating for new measures, like I talk a lot about taxing the rich, looking at corporate developers, corporate polluters who's creating more harm and acting fees upon them, we could create more revenue streams so that we can fully fund and expand 311 and 911. We can expand the unarmed workforce and provide thousands of jobs to mental health providers and social workers that are looking to meet this need in our community. This also means we still have the measures to basically decriminalize and demilitarize the department, take away their horses and take away the military munitions that they use on civilians. And most importantly, we still have the means to invest in prevention through prioritizing, expanding public housing, raising the minimum wage from fifteen dollars per hour. These are all the things that can still happen under leadership that has not happened because we haven't had leaders in our ward and citywide to exercise the political will to see these things through.
Cam?
Well, I think there's two main areas we can work. One is what can we do about the department itself? And how can we help building those other things like the Office of Violence Prevention that I spearheaded, like the mobile crisis response teams that I led in getting budgeted and funded this year? Also, in January, we'll be getting the operational staffing study of the Minneapolis Police Department. Results coming in. This is a study that we funded last year that it should be completed. Will give us a lot of good information, and we can also build off of the 911 study that we completed earlier. But we also have a police oversight ordinance that needs overhauling that I've started work on right now. I actually advocate an early intervention system, which the police department has advocated too, but hasn't been able to implement even though it's been funded since 2016. But I want to move that function to the Civil Rights Department where police oversight lives, and I want to empower our Police Conduct Oversight Commission to do more performance evaluations. We need to improve our hiring. We need to improve our performance evaluation. We need to improve our training. We do implicit bias training now, but we don't do implicit bias testing. We need to start doing that as well.
Thank you very much. All right. There's a third charter amendment on the ballot this year, and this one, of course, deals with rent control. It reads as such, "Shall the Minneapolis City Charter be amended to authorize the City Council to regulate rents on private residential property in the city of Minneapolis?" Again, you get a minute and a half to talk about this one. Do you support the amendment, yes or no, and why? And Tom, you go first.
I don't, but again, not because something, something could work. I've talked to small landlords who are, think that there could be a program that could work. I've talked to a lot of them that struggle to see a program that could work. They worry about deferred maintenance. They worry about needing to sell their, not being able to make enough money and having to sell their home. You sell a rental home, which we don't have enough of. We don't have enough rentals for families right now. It goes back into the single-family home. It's no longer a rental property, and you're making the problem worse. There are programs out there that could possibly work. And I know that this one just gives the council the ability to create a rent control ordinance. However, as we've seen, I would like them to come up with the plan first. I would like them to do the work first so that they can show us, "This is what it is. Now we will give you the authority to implement it." As opposed to just saying, "We will give you the authority. We trust you. Go ahead and come up with something." We haven't been able to pull people together to create an actual comprehensive system of public safety. I don't know how we're going to pull people together to create an actual system of rent stabilization that will work either. And so that's my problem with it, and so, no. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin?
Yes, I absolutely support this measure, mostly because more than forty percent of Ward II residents currently live in cost burden or unaffordable housing. So there's a direct need even right now in our ward. And this is largely because, under our current ward leadership, and citywide leadership, they've laid the red carpet out for corporate developers. And we see these luxury apartments all up and down university. We also see on the tax of public housing with Glendale Townhomes. So we've literally created a market of, or a housing crisis from investing in profit-driven housing. And rent control can actually be a harm reduction approach towards further displacement of Ward II residents so that they could continue to stay and live in our communities. And most importantly, Thomas now, that there's no support. Community has done the work to create a plan around this. And as a city council member, I will continue to work with the communities, the coalitions that actually draft out based off of best practices to make a strong rent control policy. And we've already seen through polling, there is more support behind this amendment than there is opposition. So if you're coming in as a leader that says you support the community, then stand with them in their need and stand in them, or with them, in their expertise, which already shows that they're ready for this. Now we just need elected leaders that's actually going to exercise the political will to execute it and make sure a strong policy actually comes about that's going to benefit renters and residents in our ward.
Cam?
I support this. In fact, this is a charter amendment that came forward from me and two of my colleagues. So there's one charter amendment that came from the council, one that came from the Charter Commission, and one that came from the residents of Minneapolis. And this is the one that came from the council. I support it. We are required to go to the voters before we do something like this and get permission by state law. So in order for us to do a rent stabilization program, first, we need to get the consent of the voters. Now, Minneapolis is already in the business of regulating rental property. We have rental licenses. We have housing inspectors. We're doing that already, so we're dealing with the market. We are now facing a crisis in our city of people being displaced and pushed out of the city because they can no longer afford to live here. They can no longer afford to buy homes here. They can no longer afford to rent property here. As the city has become more popular, we've been growing because people want to live here. And that's great. It's a sign of great success that we're seeing. But we don't want our current residents to suffer and be pushed out. So this will be one way we can help stabilize those rents so they can stay, so that it's, they can know what to expect better. We're not talking about programs like some might be afraid of in New York City or San Francisco. We're looking at Washington and Oregon, places where allow a cost of living increase and another increase, and they can have mitigating circumstances too if there's other expenses. But landlords and renters alike will understand what to expect. They'll understand the playing field. I believe that we can indeed develop a program that both landlords and renters will like. We need permission from the voters first, and then we can get to work on that.
Thank you. Yusra?
Yes. So like Cam said, this gives you the opportunity to take up the possibility of instituting rent control. And we all do know that rent prices are going up. Affordable, we're going through an affordable housing crisis for the past two decades now. And as a renter in Dinkytown, it isn't easy. So I do agree with that, for residents to vote on it. And if we do, and if it end up passing, I would like to see experts on the matter and landlords and different stakeholders to be brought in so we can institute something that works for Minneapolis and we don't replicate some of the failures in other places like San Francisco and New York so that we don't make whatever, the issue that we have, a lot worse than what it is today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now we'll go back to the one minute. This is confusing, but you're doing a great job. So how would you, how would you ensure that a rent stabilization proposal does not impose undue burden on responsible rental property owners? And Robin, you go first.
How, can you reframe that undue burden? Or like clarifying what that means?
Okay. How would you ensure that rent does not impose? I think, I didn't write this one, but I think that, you know, how, by having rent stabilization, is the burden going to go to the property owners because they can't raise the rent?
Got you. Okay.
Yusra mentioned that we need community experts or experts landlords. And the beauty about this process of how community has already organized around this is that there's already a study by Cura that has already assessed, looking across the nation, that rent control policies, especially those that are centered in protecting the tenants, that make sure there are caps at three percent, there has not been repercussions. They have not stopped development. So there's already existing expertise, you know, top-tier research that shows that this does not have negative impacts. But what will have negative impacts for landlords is for you to constantly cycle in and out through tenants and constantly creating this dynamic where tenants are leaving our city. They're unable to stay in our communities to patronize businesses because they're largely putting most of their income towards rent. putting most of their income towards rent. So I also stand behind the fact that we should not be treating housing as a commodity. Residents should not have to choose between sending their kids to school or paying for after-school programs or paying their rent. This is just a dynamic. And there's studies and research shows that this is a supportive and positive mechanism to keep our communities intact, to make sure that residents have more income, to truly have quality lives for themselves and their families.
Thank you. Cam?
Yeah, I really recommend that everybody look at that study from the University of Minnesota that Robin alluded to. That was what, study that the people of Minneapolis paid for. The city council hired the Center for Urban Renewal and Affairs, I think is what Cura has spelled out is, from the University of Minnesota to do that study. And it offers lots of options. There's lots of potentials and possibilities, and there's lots of ways other cities do it to help mitigate some of those costs. Let's say your roof all of a sudden needs to be replaced. Well, we can make an accommodation that says for those increased costs, that can be shared by raising rents as well, and you can go above what maybe the cost of living would be and the percentage above that. Let's say property taxes are suddenly skyrocketing for you. Well, we can have rules that accommodate for that. We can discuss those and have that. Luckily, we have a Housing Advisory Committee with the city that has representation of landlords and renters alike on it, that I was able to establish this term for the first time. And they're weighing in on this and they're reviewing it and they're looking at it. We can have other experts come back and help and we can come up with a great program.
Thank you. Yusra?
Yes, so initially, it was my reluctance to supporting this amendment. And like I've said before, it's about bringing stakeholders to the table, making sure that we have a concrete plan. Although I'm not very confident that this current council can do that, that is why this election is very consequential. But if we do end up instituting a rent control, some form of rent control, we make sure that it is, it works for Minneapolis. It's tailor-made to fit Minneapolis. It doesn't reflect, we're not New York, we're not San Francisco, we're not Oregon, we're Minneapolis. It reflects Minneapolis and its principles and that we can mitigate some of the unintended consequences so that we don't scare landlords who are already keeping their rent affordable, mom-and-pop landlords. We have a lot of those in Ward 2. So by looking into it and bringing in expert in matter individuals to actually come up with a concrete plan.
Tom?
Great, thank you. And I guess the options, I listened to the U of M and the council when they came and talked to y'all, and they gave options. They gave options for pass-throughs for maintenance, like you had said. And I guess what I would say is, we're talking about rent control. Obviously, we need more affordable housing, but we also need to make sure that these small landlords who are the majority, just good people in our communities are also able to keep up these properties. And I think that there are some issues with that. And we're also doing things to put Band-Aids on larger economic problems. A lot of the problem is people don't have enough money, right? And this starts from a young age. We need to support our kids, support our communities, support our families. We need wraparound community schools so our kids can have what they need. We need to make sure that they have the ability to get a good education. We need to make sure that we have a Minneapolis or Minnesota College Promise Program that makes sure that students can go to college and get the education that they want and whatever sort of training they want so that they can enter in and they can be full participants in the economy and they can afford rent and they can afford to buy homes. This is a much larger problem that we need to address, and I see that I'm out of time. So I'll stop. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, to move on to a question about something completely different than the charter amendments. And I think this one will be a fun one to hear your answers. What is your plan for the youth in our community? And we begin with Cam.
Well, I think what we really need to do is do a lot more to support our youth. We have a youth coordinating board where the parks, schools, county, and the city get together and work on youth. And we have identified lack of funding in the last few years, especially for after-school activities in this next budget that's coming up. The parks are asking for an increase so that they can increase recreational activities. I think a key for us in the future is working with our schools and working with our parks and making sure that we support them. We need to go to the state and the federal level and ask for support and help too to support our youth in terms of education and youth development. The city also has some amazing programs for youth employment. We have a Step Up program. We have our community colleges that are supporting Minneapolis students so that they can attend their first year of college at no cost. So we need to support those programs and build them up. I actually think that during the COVID pandemic, we were trying to protect everyone and we ended up pulling back so far that we put our youth at great risk. And right now, we need to make sure that we're reinvesting in those programs to support them.
Thank you. Yusra?
Yeah, thank you. I think this is one area that has been highly neglected, not just in the city, but as a state as a whole. We have two big universities in Ward 2, and as city council, we should be advocates for those students. I graduated from the U of M. I know that most of these kids are dealing with rising costs of living in rent and basic living and also in tuition and debt. We also, we've forgotten BIPOC communities and youth in those communities. That's why we're seeing uptick in crime, in gun violence. We lack programming, we lack significant resources. And even with the Step Up program and the Urban Scholar that we have at the city, if you don't know about it, you won't be able to get into it. So the city does a poor job in communicating with BIPOC communities and educating them on the resources that are available. If resources are available and nobody's taking advantage of it, it's useless. It's money that's being wasted. We need more programming, we need to be able to fund and activate some of these rec centers. And I know the pandemic played a role in that, but nonetheless, we've failed our youth for the past couple of decades and we need to do more. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Yeah, thank you. I actually connected that last question to this question a little bit in my previous answer. As someone who works for Minnesota State University students, a graduate of the University of Minnesota, former public school teacher, currently on an Equity Advisory Committee for Minneapolis Public Schools, is a father of a three-and-a-half-year-old and a nine-month-old. And on the last one of these, Remy was watching, so hey, Remy, be nice to your mom. The Urban Scholars Program is great, but this is a passion of mine. This is what I've dedicated my life to is young people. We've failed. The council hasn't addressed our needs in terms of our youth. Our schools are not the city council's problem. There is a school board, the state is underfunding our schools. However, we need to do everything we can to support them, stable homes, stable schools. And as an example of how we support our kids, as a teacher, it was our students who didn't know where their next meal was going to come from, they didn't know where they were going to sleep, they didn't know, you know, they didn't, their lives were, there were so many things going on in their lives that they weren't able to concentrate on their education, and that's understandable. And so we need to do everything we can to support them to make sure that they have a place that cares for them as a whole person. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin?
Yeah, I think one of the clearest way you can support youth is support their parents. As I mentioned earlier, a lot of our families, because, you know, stagnant wages, a lot of our families are working two to three jobs, do not have the time to dedicate towards raising their families and spending time with their kids. And it's largely even linked to the public safety issue because our parents are having to deal with economic crises on all fronts. Many of our kids are left to have to entertain themselves or get involved in other activities that might not be healthy or productive. So one of the ways we can support families is invest in housing, raise the minimum wage to $20, pass rent control so families are not having to spend their limited income towards expensive rents. I think we can also, as my experience, fund measures like full-service community schools through collaborative partnerships with the county and park board to make sure all of our schools are fully resourced to meet the needs of our students and families. And also, as I think Tom mentioned, we have two universities in Ward 2. As an elected leader, I plan in my community office to create a student advisory committee and also, again, support rent control because students are paying too much in rent. Easy way for youth support there.
Thank you. All right, our next, you answered that one, did you?
Yes, I did.
All right.
Wasn't very memorable, I guess.
Sorry. All right, our next question. What could you, as a councilperson, do to help small businesses along the Lake Street and University Avenue and other major corridors in Ward 2, both to help bolster business and also to control the break-ins that are occurring? Yusra, you go first.
That's a great question. So during, I was at City Hall during the uprising and throughout the pandemic, and I was part of a coalition that were, that included communities and community organizations and nonprofits who came together and presented a list of recommendations for City Hall and for companies at downtown who wanted to partake and invest in these businesses. So the number one thing that came out of that is capital, especially for BIPOC communities along Lake Street who were devastated by the civil unrest and the pandemic. Some of them didn't have the necessary resources. Also, the city does a poor job in educating residents on how to get resources, navigating bureaucracy at City Hall. I saw that firsthand, how BIPOC and minority-owned businesses couldn't, had to go through different hoops to get to coding, licensing, and other variations. So maybe we need to look into that and revise it so it can be a one-stop shop for these businesses that are struggling. The most important thing are resources and capital, and we haven't been able to provide that as a city and as a state, and most of them are still struggling.
Thank you. Tom?
Great, thank you. Growing up, my dad and his brother owned a small grocery store in our tiny town of 900 people. And that store was like my second home and the employees there were like my second family. It's extremely important to me that we support these businesses. When I asked him when I ran, I said, you know, what can I do to support businesses? And we had a conversation. He said, the first thing to me was, I didn't wake up in the morning trying to figure out how to make a bunch of money. I woke up trying to figure out how to help the community. They're a vital part of our community and we need to do everything we can for them, expanding the Small Business Technical Assistance Program to make sure that they're embedded in the community so that businesses know what they qualify for. If there's a program that exists that they don't know exists, then that's not helpful. Also, we do need money. To rebuild East Lake Street, we need a lot of money, and that's going to have to come from the state as well. And so we need to do everything we can to put pressure on the state, to work with our allies at the state, to flip some of these seats in suburbs in greater Minnesota to get more of our Democratic allies at the state level so that we can get that money to help our city. Our city gives a lot of money to the state and gets a lot less in return in LGA, and it's extremely important that we continue to pressure them to do so.
Okay, thank you. Robin?
Yeah, this is a really major issue because we're already seeing along High Lake, basically corporate chains come in and fulfill spaces that were, you know, burned down in the uprising, while our businesses like Gani Mahal, that has been a community access, McGee, like, all of these businesses that were largely Black and Brown-led have not had the resources to rebuild. So I think one of the clearest ways in which we could support the redevelopment so that it's not, you know, bending towards corporate chains, is to fund or support rent control, extending that to commercial businesses. Also, would champion the Cleveland model and fund community development financial institutions that provides financing that largely big banks will not provide to small businesses even right now. And that means even extending financing or incentivizing good job programs so that, you know, if you're a small business, you're providing your workers with livable wages and benefits, you can have your loan or portions of your loan forgiven. So really incentivizing and creating and providing the capital to those businesses to make sure they're taking care of their workers and staying in our communities.
And Cam?
I think it is important that we make sure that what we have available right now is accessible to the businesses along all those corridors. I think one of the things we have to do is also support what's already there. We have community development corporations that are working in those areas. We have small business associations that are working in many of those areas, but in some parts of Ward 2, we don't have those things. We should see what we can do as a city to help create and support the development of new small business associations and new community development corporations. I actually advocate the creation of a municipal bank, a city bank, so that we can also be more active in lending to those businesses that really need it and participating along with them. I would also like to see the university district become a university improvement district, much as downtown. I think one of the ways we can address our crime issues, if we had more commercial corridor ambassadors like we see with the downtown ambassadors, kind of a constable walking around unarmed, but somebody who can help, somebody who can call and get support and thinks that they need it. And I think we need to see that program grow so that we can support Lake Street, Como University Avenue, and Franklin Avenue.
Okay, and I think several of you kind of touched on parts of this next question, so maybe you'll get to expand it a little bit. Name one or two actions that you would propose to make Minneapolis a city that provides equality, social justice, and economic opportunities for all community members. Tom, you go first.
Great, thank you. I've talked about this before a little bit, you know, where I work in much smaller than the city of Minneapolis. But, you know, we did a full-scale equity audit on our entire, on our entire organization. And I know that new policies that come through have to go through this, but we need to start from the bottom up. These systems are rooted in hundreds of years of inequities, and we need to look at every single system, we need to look at every single department, we need to start from the beginning. We need to set metrics on how we're going to get there that comes with how our hiring practices are, the cultures within our departments. And then we can get to the policies that have been created previously and how maybe those are inequitable and how those reach people. So it comes with a full-scale plan that is going to take a lot of work, but we can't just keep doing patchwork things here and there. We need to do a whole-scale audit of our city to find those spaces.
Thank you. Robin?
Yeah, I think kind of two clearest things through my community office where we intend to empower, because that's the issue within our current city council and ward leadership, is folks don't feel empowered to take on these issues. So making sure that we, as a community office, as an elected official, we're bringing the organizing power to our residents to drive many of the changes that they're already working on, meaning passing rent control, making sure we're raising the livable wages. We have some of the worst economic disparities in the city. One of the clearest way you can address that is increasing wages. Also, for me, as a democratic socialist, it means investing in the public good. That's a space that everyone, regardless of your race or economic background, you should be able to have access to public housing, free public transit, also a public safety department that doesn't create more disparities and harm for one side of the community and safety for another. So I think the clearest ways is investing, expanding, and transforming some of these public goods to make sure that everyone, not Black and Brown people, are treated as second-class citizens.
Thank you. Cam?
Minneapolis has a shameful history of racism. I think we learned a lot about that when we were writing our Minneapolis 2040 Plan and a lot of that terrible history. We have made progress in recent years. Now the city finally has a division of race and equity. Just this year, we are starting a Commission on Truth and Reconciliation. And that truth and reconciliation is to look deeply at what the harms we have done to Black and Indigenous people in our city, especially ancestors or descendants of those who were enslaved. I think we need to start having a serious conversation about what will reparations look like in the city of Minneapolis. We have an opportunity to create children's savings accounts for those who need them. Maybe that should be tied to some kind of reparations. I think it's time that we look at a guaranteed basic income in our city. Other cities are doing that. It could actually save us money, but it also might help us repair some of the past harms that we've done as a city before we were here, but it's still been done by our country and by our city and by our government, and we should repair the damage.
Thank you. Yusra?
Yes, thank you. I think economic inclusion is desperately needed in our city and in our state, and that means resources and investment in communities that are most impacted. Jobs are essential. For any community to be thriving and get out of poverty, you need a job, you need investment, you need resources. We also need to be able to provide for our local entrepreneurs who are from the communities that they're based in and be able to streamline and give them resources and funding needed so that they can stay in those communities that they're a part of much longer. We also need assistance for home ownership for BIPOC communities, having grants available, having down payments for families, educating them on financial literacy so that they can stay in place. We also need programming for the youth. What we need more than anything is capital and investment and resources, and that is what it's lacking. And that's how we make sure we get to the root of these disparities and inequities that we have in our city. And instead of just using equity as a model in theory, we need to essentially practice it, and it has to be tangible. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we move on to affordable housing. And the first question is, "It appears that luxury student housing is displacing affordable housing and affordable student housing. What is the speculative impact on development and the affordability of housing, and how can this be addressed?" And I'm not sure what that last part means, so please don't ask me. Let's just say, how can this be addressed, the luxury student housing that's being put up at the university? How can that, how can that be addressed?
That'd be addressed. Oh, is it me then?
You're first.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Robin.
Okay. I think, again, this is, shows one of the clearest failures of the current leadership that we have in Ward 2, where we've literally seen corporate development be concentrated amongst the student corridor of our ward. So I think one of the clearest ways we can address that is, of course, passing rent control. It's a known fact that many students right now are having to pay $2,000 for a room in a four-bedroom apartment to a corporate developer. That should not happen. We should be putting caps on rents. Another thing that we could do is actually expand public housing in that community. Another thing that we could do is actually expand public housing in that community. Under our current leadership, you know, under Cam's, we've seen privatization efforts be launched against Glendale townhomes and public housing right in our ward. We need to be investing and expanding that. Also, this is a creative opportunity to look at the Burt Land model. Let's purchase units from the private market, put them in a trust, and make sure we're extending access to students directly under our own mandates that doesn't disregard people's background, around class, around economic, around criminal records, making sure that we actually have housing that's available to everyone and that's not dictated by the corporate and profit-driven market.
Cam?
Well, I'm really glad that we've been able to preserve Glendale as purely public housing. It's nominated as historic, and I hopefully that that will pass and the city will go along so that we can make sure that we preserve that. I think in some areas of the city, we've got some great models that are working, like in Cedar Riverside, where we have a land trust model that's working so that the city actually is leasing the land, and then we have long-term affordable housing there. I think we have to keep preserving the affordable housing that we have. Rent stabilization, of course, is one tool. We've now passed an inclusionary zoning law, so future housing will have to include some affordable units in it. I'm also working hard on a tenant opportunity to purchase, which means when these properties go up for sale, and right now, there are a lot of speculators who want to come in, especially in southeast Como and some other parts where it's affordable housing and they can tear it down and make a lot of money renting it. Well, if we can have an opportunity to purchase by the city or by a friendly developer or by the tenant, and maybe the city and then a developer can hold it while the tenant gets organized to purchase that, that will be a way to make that long-term affordable and also promote home ownership, and those are just a few ideas.
Thank you. Yusra?
Yes, so I live in the southeast Como neighborhood, and zoning laws have allowed for developers to come in and build these four-plexes and charge triple the price than what they were worth by replacing single-family homes. And we're seeing community being driven out. Also, there's a brand-new condo, like Robin said, going up on every corner. I sure can't afford it. I doubt any of the students can afford it either. So, maybe we need to look into measures that determine what affordability is. And for me, affordability is 30% of a person's income and not necessarily the area median income. We also need to look into variety of ways of having different versions of what we call affordable, whether it's building different units, partnering up with NPHA, creating incentives and programs for developers to at least include certain amount of units in these apartments that are considered affordable and that are truly affordable and not necessarily slightly below what the area rent is.
Okay, thank you. Tom?
Great, yeah, it's part of a much larger problem. Obviously, the city has used zoning and overlays to make sure that we have different areas of the city developed differently. They failed to do that here. We could do that now and we could put that in place. Affordable housing is extremely important. The larger issue that I see here as well is that obviously all these systems are tied together. You have students, you have what is essentially predatory lending. They're lending students money for rent that they don't have the money for and expecting them to pay it back on the back end. We have a broken system all through. If they weren't able to get that money for the expensive rent through student loans, then we wouldn't have that problem either, right? So, it's a much larger predatory student loan system that actually is forcing these students, if they want to live on campus or live near campus, you're 18, 19-years-old, you're given a loan with no capital, and you're told, "Well, you can just use this for this nice housing." Okay, great. A lot of times, they make that decision, and then you end up paying for it on the back end, and you pay a lot of interest on the back end, and you can never climb out of that debt. And so, it's all a part of the system that needs to be completely adjusted. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next one is tied a little bit to what we've just talked about, but it is, "How will you work with the city and developers to address the need for more public housing or Section Eight housing?" And Cam, you go first.
I think it's really important that we start funding public housing as a city. It's something we've avoided doing and we're hesitant to do because I think we feel that it must be a federal obligation to do that. So, that means that we have been relying on some of the schemes from Washington DC about how to get the funding and doing that. We actually have a housing levy, the authority to put a levy out there, a tax for public housing. I think we should do that, not necessarily meaning that we increase the levy overall, but we make sure that we're putting some money into public housing. I have a plan where we would make a commitment to do that for 20 years, and with that 20-year commitment, that would allow public housing right now to start borrowing off of that so that they could make sure that they're fixing up and preserving what they already have and that they have the money to build new public housing. Last time, they opened the waiting list, I think there were 1,800 or so people who qualified, but there were no public housing units available to them. Our goal should be to make sure that we have public housing for all those who qualify.
Thank you. Yusra?
Yes, I think we need to incentivize the development of new affordable units. It costs a lot to build them, so the city should be able to dedicate different programmings and funding into it. We also need to look into making our affordable housing trust fund more permanent and add more money into it. I also do agree with Cam in terms of looking into bringing back the housing levy so that we're able to assist NPHA maintain the current stock that they have, but also build upon it, which they haven't been able to do for the past couple of decades. In fact, it's a 15-year waiting list to be able to even get any affordable units or get into it. We also need to look into reducing some of the bureaucracy that we have in play that makes it so difficult for developers to come in and actually build new units. So, there are a variety of things that we can do. We just haven't had the political will there. It hasn't been a concern. As someone who grew up in public housing, I think it's essential. It's a pathway to get out of poverty, and it's the way forward to deal with the current crisis that we've been experiencing for the past two decades.
Thank you. Tom?
Great, I think I differ here a little bit, and then I do think we need to work with our federal partners on this, just like we need to work with our partners at the county for affordable housing tax credits. It's a lot of money in our city in order to raise property taxes. Again, we have a lot of things that we need in our city and a lot of things that we want in our city. I would rather that we worked with our federal partners and have the Jeff Bezos's of the world pay for this than have fixed-income people in our neighborhoods who are already struggling and already being pushed out of homes because of the increased value of their home, meaning increased property taxes, meaning additional amounts. I can afford a levy, I can continue to get cost of living raises and everything else, right? And yeah, write it down, right? I can do that, but it's not about me. It's about people in our community who are struggling too. So, we do need to leverage resources from other areas that aren't just our city, that aren't just our property taxes, because it'll have an adverse effect. It'll mean that more people are pushed out of their homes at some point because they can't afford it. So, we need to be really careful in how we do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin?
Yeah, the first way in which we can really address the crisis around our public housing is, one, to protect it. And unfortunately, under Cam's leadership, we've actually seen the support behind privatization measures and policies like Section 18 and RAD that has basically placed public housing under the threat of, or actually under the purchase of foreign interests. Take, for example, and check this out, Elliott Twins. So, we should not be selling off any public housing allotments to any type of private interest. We need to keep what we have. And we can actually expand. I'm glad that Tom mentioned, you know, a thing, a big thing that I've talked about is taxing the rich, and actually going after corporate developers, applying fees on them to actually develop or use that revenue to develop more public housing units and to buy back units and homes from the private market and put them in a trust to make sure that public housing residents, as you mentioned, Yusra, the 17,000, we actually can have a supply that stays under public ownership and that is accessible, affordable to them.
Thank you. Okay, our next question is about the homeless situation in Minneapolis. What are your goals regarding the homeless population in Minneapolis, and what plans do you have to achieve those goals? And Yusra, you start.
Sure. Yes, we've had, this started back with the wall of forgotten natives, and we were able, as a city, and partnering with the county, to institute a navigation center where most of those residents were able to find permanent housing. I think that should be permanent. It should be a permanent part of our city. We also need to look into building new, and looking into different variety of affordable housing. We also need to be able to attack the issue at the root cause. You can provide housing, but unless that person gets out of that situation and finds treatment, it's harder for them to keep that housing. So, we need to have wraparound services that are appropriate and culturally competent so that these individuals can find, get out of that situation, also find a pathway to having permanent housing. And with that, you need a housing-first model where you pair up the housing with wraparound services so that the person can get clean, find the services that they need, provide assistance while they're in treatment so that they can stay in those homes longer. If we keep doing this, it's a revolving door. We're going to keep seeing more encampments. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Great, well, our homeless neighbors are our neighbors, and we need to treat them that way. We absolutely need wraparound services. Like I said, you know, this starts now. We do need to build more housing. We need to make sure that we're able to have, there's models where there's, you know, tiny homes and things of that nature, homes within larger buildings so that they can feel like they have their own space, but there has to be wraparound services. If you're not addressing the root cause of this, then you're missing out, and there's a lot of issues around mental health and addiction that we need to help people with. And that also starts early, right? We're talking about short-term, absolutely. Long-term, again, to come back to our kids and our families and wraparound services, full-service community schools that can be used by the community, not just the students. The students can get mental health services, they can get glasses, they can get the things that they need. The families can also take part in that and can be a part of that to make sure that people have what they need because we know that it's a spiral. We know that if you catch it early and you get people treatment early, that we can keep people off the streets, right? And we can keep people from being homeless. And so, it's twofold. It's a lot like public safety. What do we do now and what do we do in the long term? I think we have to have a plan for both.
Thank you. Robin?
Absolutely. I think this is a really big issue. Just even in June, we had our own encampment along the Greenway in Ward Two, and under its closure, what we saw is basically this continuation of a whack-a-mole model where they closed that encampment, and next thing you know, we saw the one along Franklin pop up. So, we can't keep displacing these encampments from one ward to another. And one of the clearest ways is investing in the creation of housing through investing and expanding land trusts. Again, as I mentioned, purchasing units from the private market, making sure that there's permanent housing options for residents, because social services are a great investment, but no one in the midst of mental health issues or substance abuse issues can even pursue a pathway towards recovery if they do not know where they're staying the next night and the night afterwards. So, we need to make sure that we're also looking at how we can purchase hotels, also transform them into transitional housing, expand tiny home villages. There's a number of things that we can do to create more supply of permanent and transitional housing so that our unsheltered residents can actually get the additional care that they need to lead stable lives.
Thank you. And Cam?
One of the things we have to do is keep doing what I've been doing for years now, which is trying to get out of the way of good people who want to do a good thing. When I was first elected, the only way you could have a shelter is if you were a church or synagogue or a mosque, a place of religious worship, and it had to be housed in that. They had limited hours, they had to be spaced far, far away from each other. Well, the city's changed a lot since then, and we've actually amended and opened up those regulations twice. We now actually allow tiny home villages. We changed the rules so we could allow them even indoors. So, that's been, the VIVO program is an innovative one that's being tried. We also changed the laws to allow intentional communities, and we've seen some people developing housing for that focused around treatment, focused around mental health. That was something we didn't allow because you had to be related to live in a large group together. You don't anymore. Now, the most recent thing we did is looking at allowing, and we're going to allow, single-room occupancy again so we could have a more affordable design, and there could either be support services involved there, and it could be a focus like dog treatment, or it could not. And there's more, but I can't tell you about it because my time is up.
Thank you very much. Well, because this evening is sponsored by our neighborhood organizations, I'm going to ask you a question about neighborhood organizations. What do you see as the role and, I'm sorry, and value of neighborhood organizations, and how will you support them as a councilperson? And Tom, you go first.
Great, well, like I said previously, I was on the Board of Directors of Longfellow Community Council. Thank you for helping put this on. I was also the co-chair of the Neighborhood Development and Transportation Committee where we got to bring people in. It was my role there was to facilitate a meeting between developers and between the community and hearing the community say, "Well, we want this to be affordable." The overwhelming majority wanted affordable housing. We need more senior housing." And it was a great experience to hear that. The problem was is that there potentially weren't enough credits available for that, right? So, we got to fix that structurally on the back end. But I will say, the community connection, the community involvement, the ability to bring people together, if we're trying to build community, you're bringing people together around common goals. You're not bringing people together who just agree with you. You're bringing people together from all broad swaths. There's work to do to make sure that we diversify our community groups as well, and they know that, and Longfellow Community Council's been doing a really good job of trying to address that as well. And so, yeah, absolutely, I'm on board, and we need to support them, and we need to make sure that they have the funding that they need to continue to do that work in the community.
Thank you. Robin?
Yep. Again, I want to highlight that, you know, I'm the only candidate here that has this commitment around creating office right in the ward, using my own salary as a city council member, and largely because I see that as a role of making or creating a hub for advocacy, for grassroots organizing, for that community and relationship building that is so necessary to drive forward substantial changes that have not happened under the current leadership of our ward and citywide. Like, that is necessary, and I think, you know, by having that office, that creates the invitation, you know, automatically for our neighborhood organizations to come in and build with students, to come in and build and connect with workers in our communities, business owners, especially around key issues of how we're going to move forward with an equitable model of public safety around housing. It's going to require all of those stakeholders to come together around this shared agenda, and I'm really excited that my office can be a hub to facilitate that engagement and that advocacy.
Cam?
Well, I have a deep commitment to working with the neighborhood organizations, and I actually had the advantage of being president of my neighborhood organization. I would say my involvement in the neighborhood organization at Seward is what led me to want to seek office as a city council member as well. And I was involved in the Neighborhood Revitalization Program days and where participatory budgeting was very much something that was going on at that level. I'll also confess that once I got to the council, I was the person who spearheaded the diversity audits of all of our boards of our neighborhoods because I think we need to make sure that those neighborhood organizations are working hard to be representative. And we have to do that because then we're going to actually get better results if we can have more voices at the table and more people involved. I think that it's an amazing, amazing resource of these neighborhood organizations, and if the city can support them and keep them healthy and keep them engaged and give them the resources that they need, they can be an amazing tool for government to work much better, whatever the issue is, housing, public safety, tackling climate change. These neighborhood organizations can make an enormous difference, and we need to support them better, including raising the base funding.
Thank you. And Yusra?
Yes, neighborhood organizations are an extension of the community. It's the way that council has a pulse on what's going on at a hyper-local level. I do agree that they're very important, vital to communities and for elected officials to stay engaged and be aware of what's happening inside neighborhoods. But I also do think that I can be a gap in this position. I can be a gap, I can be the bridge that gaps that minorities and BIPOC communities, especially in wards who are somewhat segregated and they're not part of these big neighborhood organizations. I would love to be that person that connects these communities to these neighborhood organizations so they can be part of the community and they can feel like they belong in these neighborhoods that they've resided for decades. I also think that the recent cuts in fundings are unnecessary, and if I were to be elected, I would look into revising that and increasing because they play a vital role in our neighborhoods, and they're needed. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Well, we've come to the end of the questions, actually not the end of the questions, but the end of the time for the questions. So, we're ready for closing remarks, and what I would like to ask you to include in your closing remark is what you love about living in Ward Two and what do you hope that by being a city councilperson you would be able to enhance, whatever it is that you love about living in Ward Two? And we are back to Robin. You will start with the closing comments.
Absolutely. I've had the privilege of having Ward Two be my home. It's a place that has emboldened me to become one of the lead, you know, community organizers in our city to fight for progressive change, like 15 minimum wage, like, you know, the public safety changes that we're debating about right now to actually create a more equitable public safety model for everyone, to have investments in our public schools, and also largely to run, even now, as an independent democratic socialist. Ward Two has been a leader in progressive change because so many of our residents do have a shared interest in making sure our neighbors are housed, they're fed, they have the wages that they need to live quality and healthy lives. And I think for, you know, the past 20 years, while, you know, the work of our current councilmember has been great, it's time in this crossroads of our city where the status quo yielded the George Floyd, you know, awakening that we all experienced. It also yielded his murder, and it's constantly yielded more disparities. And now, more than ever, it's time to have leaders that are rooted in these progressive values in our communities that has connections to the grassroots groups that's been doing the dirty and messy work of actually doing and producing substantial real change and bringing that forward into City Hall and making sure that we have a strong rent control and making sure that we have a strong rent control policy, making sure that we're having a public safety system that goes beyond policing, and to even tackle and take on the rich that extract way more than they give to us and tax the rich to fund our collective needs. And I look forward to doing that as your next city council member.
Thank you. CAM?
I remember when I was a little boy and I heard about the arc of the universe bends towards justice, and I thought, "Well, that's where it should be bending. That's great. I'm really glad that's happening." Well, I got a little bit older, and I realized that that wasn't some law of physics. It wasn't like gravity, that the law, what wasn't making it bend to justice, it was people. And that's one of the things I love most about the second ward is the people, and that the people care for one another and that the people want to make a difference, and that the people are willing to grab hold of that arc, if you will, and work on bending that. And, you know, one of us can't bend that alone. We need to work together to do that. It's been happening for years, for decades, for generations. People have been grabbing that arc, and they've been bending it together to move it towards justice, and I want to be able to continue doing that. And, you know, that's not easy. We need to listen to one another. We need to talk about what needs to be done. We need to stand up and speak and make sure our voice is heard. We need to make sure we're hearing the other voices so that we can work together and do that. We need to make sure that we are working with each other and for all of us. And if we are willing to work with all of us and for all of us, we can make this city a leader in how to transform public safety so it works for everybody. Working with all of us, for all of us, we can make sure we have decent housing for everybody that they want to live in. Working with all of us and for all of us, we can make sure that our city works better, not just for us, but for the future generations to come.
Thank you. Yusra?
Thank you. I love living in Ward 2. It's a place I've resided for the past 14 years. I'm right across from Van Cleve Park. It's where I'm raising my daughter. It has welcomed me and my family with open arms, and I would love to be the person that represents my community at City Hall. But this is a very consequential election. It determines the future of our city. And for those that are most impacted, especially communities of color and minorities, it's a time that we can't just bet and gamble with. It's not, we can't just have good enough. We need transformative and substantial change if we are to move forward as a city. And I hope to be the person that brings that about. And I would also like to add, I've had the great pleasure of working with CAM, and he has done a great job for the years that he was there, but unfortunately, we're not better off today than we were 16 years ago when he took office. And I do think it's time that we need someone who's reflective of the community, someone who has lived these experiences, someone who knows what's on the ground, who has actual solutions, to be the person that moves this mantle forward. Thank you.
Tom?
Great, well, I'll start with, you know, the voters in Ward 2 are going to have a difficult choice, everyone up here. I mean, it just exemplifies what I love about our community is that there are all of these diverse backgrounds that lead to clearly divergent opinions on how we should solve our problems, but we're able to come together and talk about those and try to find a way forward. And I just want to thank you all for participating in these and being able to have that dialogue here. And that's what I love. It's the community. That's why I love being a part of Longfellow Community Council. That's why I love teaching. That's why, you know, it's just, it's about everybody, right? And I love this community. In particular, I live a block off East Lake Street. East Lake Street, so much love. My three-and-a-half-year-old son literally just wants to go walk and watch cars on East Lake Street. He would do it for hours. But yeah, to be able to walk to the grocery store, walk to the hardware store, to be able to walk to my dental appointment, to have a community that has these things available to us is something that we need to treasure, and it's something that we need to value, and those businesses are something we really need to support. Also, you know, we're not in charge of parks, but the parks are fantastic in Ward 2, so I'll also give a shout out to our parks. But we've talked a lot about the issues in our community that we need to tackle, housing, sustainability, public safety, all those issues. I'm just asking you to hopefully elect someone. Hopefully, you'll vote for me or at least rank me. And to bring people together and continue to bring our community together to solve our problems. Thank you.
Thank you so much to all of our candidates. I think you said it, Tom. This was really delightful for me to sit and listen to the four of you because you all followed the rules and you all listened to our timekeepers, so I do appreciate that very much. I also want to recognize Erin Harvey and Marilyn Contasano from the League of Women Voters. They have done a huge job this fall helping to run forums because we have a lot of different races going on. And I want to thank Fair Vote, Minnesota, MCN6, and our sponsoring communities for helping sponsor this tonight. I want to remind everybody that they should make a plan for how they're going to vote on November 2nd or before. Early voting has already started, so you can look up how to do that. For information on how to vote, you can turn to vote.miniaplismn, all one word, .gov. And I believe they're going to put that on the screen, and that is where you can look to find out where to vote. So just remember to vote and to rank your vote. Thank you very much for your attendance tonight.